Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight, Wednesday, April 20, for our Napa County Candidate Forum Board of Supervisors, District 3. I am Yolanda Chambrun of the League of Women Voters of Napa County. Tonight, we're here to help educate Napa County voters by giving you the opportunity to hear from the candidates for this race, while we usually provide in-person forums due to COVID-19 concerns, or coming to you via Zoom webinar. We're providing Spanish translation via the Zoom interpreter capability. If you wish to listen to the Spanish translation, click the globe-like icon, usually on the bottom right of your screen, and check "Spanish." Para escuchar en español, haga clic al ícono del globo terráqueo, que usualmente se encuentra abajo al lado derecho de la pantalla, y escoja el canal de español. Our translator for tonight is Zalila Hernandez. Nuestra traductora es Zalila Hernandez. We're recording this forum, and it will be posted on YouTube, our LWV website, Facebook, and on our other social media platforms. For FCC rules, no other recording of this forum or excerpts from the LWV recording are allowed. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We're nonpartisan and do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League does participate in issue advocacy and voter education. If you would like to join us in our work, please visit our website, lvwnapa.org, for membership information and much, much more. The League encourages civil discourse, and the candidates have all agreed to participate under guidelines set for this forum. The candidates have agreed to confine their remarks to the qualifications and issues, and not to resort to defamatory remarks about the other candidate. Microphones and video are out for everyone except the candidates and the LWV forum team. Please remember to mute yourself while you listen to the other candidates. Our League's team helping with us for this forum tonight are our moderator Bernie Brooks, our timekeeper Linda Didericki-Yolo. I will not turn the evening over to Bernie.
Thank you, Yolanda, and good evening, everyone, and welcome to the candidates. We appreciate you being here with us tonight. Tonight, we have all six candidates for the position of Board of Supervisor for District 3: Anna Choutou, and Katrelle, John Dunbar, Matthew Hooper, Lucio Cio Perez, and Rafael Rios. Thank you. This League of Women Voter Forum provides an opportunity for our community to learn about the candidates for this position, and we will do this by giving each candidate time for an opening statement, after which we'll have one hour for as many questions as we can fit in, and then we'll finish with each candidate's closing statement. The questions were solicited in advance from the community and League of Women Voter members. Our team screened the questions to avoid duplication and to ensure nonpartisanship. The candidates have not seen the questions in advance. Candidates, please keep yourself on mute while you're not answering a question, and ensure that you can view the timekeeper screen so that you can keep to the allotted time. I retain the right to mute any candidate who continually runs over their allotted time or violates the signed agreement to maintain civil discourse, and that will be true for folks in chat as well. The starting order for answering the questions was determined before everyone logged in by random selection, and we will start with the first opening statement. Each opening statement has one minute and a half, and John Dunbar, you will go first.
Thank you. As mayor of Yanville for 12 years, I have a perspective that will benefit our board of supervisors. I'm the only candidate with significant local government service and a record for delivering results for our community. Effective leadership requires a record of managing core services, economic stability, housing, public and mental health, as well as wildfires, water, and climate action. I can represent the issues and concerns held by more than 80% of Napa County residents who live and work in the cities and towns. The value of my experience is magnified throughout the unique and diverse areas of District 3. While land use policy debates tend to receive the headlines, that is a fraction of the board of supervisors' scope of work. I know the factors that need to be considered to make good decisions regarding the budget, public safety, health and human services, and staffing. I know how to balance relationships within the county and between all the jurisdictions, stakeholders, and the public. I will make sure our District 3 communities receive support, services, and funding from Napa County and our state and federal partners. I'm proud of the many endorsements that I've received, including state Assemblymember Cecilia Aguirar Curry, the Napa County Farm Bureau, former Napa Mayor Joel Tackle, Napa Vice Mayor Mary Lurus, Napa City Councilmember Liz Alessio, Calistoga Mayor Chris Canning, American Canyon Mayor Leon Garcia, Yanville Town Councilmembers Joe Tagliabashi and Marjorie Moller, and numerous business owners and operators and residents throughout Napa County.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Sorry. It takes a little getting used to, to being able to multitask here, I know. Anne Katrelle, you're next. One and a half minutes.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I am running for District 3 supervisor because I have a long-term connection and commitment to the people and places of Napa County, and will bring legal skills and experience, a deep understanding of county issues, and a track record as a thoughtful, independent decision-maker and a collaborative leader. I was born and raised in Napa County, and my husband and I have raised our three sons here. I graduated from St. Helena High School, Yale University, and UC Berkeley School of Law. As an undergraduate and a law student, natural resource issues, including climate change, were top of mind for me. This focus continued in my legal work at the Oregon Attorney General and later in private practice. My community work here in the county includes board service on the Vine Trail, Nimbus Arts, and the Napa County Land Trust, where I also served as chair. In 2014, Diane Dillon appointed me to the Napa County Planning Commission, and now I'm in my eighth year there. I also serve on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan Corps Team and the Watershed Information and Conservation Council. So I'm already working on key county issues like wildfire, water security, housing, and climate change. Finally, as planning commissioner, I have made it a priority to be a team player and an independent thinker, to listen to all stakeholders and be respectful of the public staff and my colleagues. I look forward to bringing these priorities to the role of supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. And now we will move to Anna Choutou.
Choutou, I always say it's like shoe and a toe.
Shoe and a toe.
To pronounce it, yes.
I'm sorry.
No, please. It's so hard for many people. That's why my cousin helped me come up with that. But thank you so much for having us tonight. I am running for Napa County Supervisor because I want to do everything I can to have a positive impact on our communities. I've been incredibly fortunate to have gotten elected to the St. Helena City Council, and I'm really proud of this is my four-year of my council term. Before that, I got involved on a city committee just by chance when a friend said she was going to get involved with the, it was called the SHAPE Committee, but it was actually looking at all of the city's assets and building and planning for the future. She couldn't do it. She's probably on this call, but I was lucky enough to apply for it and then became the vice chair of that committee, and it set me on this path of getting involved in our local government. And I have really loved doing the work. It has allowed me to get connected to the community in so many ways. I'm very active with the public schools. I have two young children who I adore, and they've made it so that I've gotten really connected to St. Helena, although I have not from here. I grew up nearby in Alexander Valley, in another spectacularly beautiful place. It's very rural, at the end of a dirt road, surrounded by vineyards and also a river. My family wasn't in the wine industry. My dad was a city attorney, later a judge. My mom was a bilingual aide at Alexander Valley Public School. My dad sat on the school board. They taught me the value of public service and giving back to the community, and how fulfilling that is in a life lived. The skills that I bring, I went to UCSB, and I studied communications and Spanish. I then worked in nonprofit leadership. I ended up as an executive. Oh, I'm overtime already. I didn't even see that.
I'm sorry. It is difficult once.
Yeah, I was looking at you, Bernie.
It goes quickly.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Rafael Rios, please. One and a half minutes.
Yes, thank you. So I grew up here in the county, in the Rutherford area, as a son of farmworkers. I attended St. Helena High Schools. I have experienced all the challenges that many of the citizens of the county are still experiencing. I have served on the Napa Valley College District Board for just about 10 years now. I'm running for this position because I think that we need to take everyone in the community into account when making decisions on land use, business regulation, and rules that affect private property rights, while taking into account the long-range impacts of those decisions, not only on the people, but also on our natural resources. We need to create the conditions that give everyone an opportunity to enhance their quality of life, economic success, and independence. That means that we must ensure that our agriculturally-based economy remains strong. It's the foundation for everything we do here, and that means that also affordable housing and farmworker housing have to be priorities. We need everyone at all different levels to be able to support our economy and all of the systems and services that the county offers. From that, I've attended UC Davis. I have a land use experience and education, and also in my legal practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Hooper. There we go. You're on mute.
Good evening. Matt Hooper. I want to tell you why I'm running. There are three reasons. First, I think it's really important for us to focus on restoring a critical balance between the ag preserve and our critical business interests. The board has a very substantial role in doing that. They're essentially the referee, and I think it's important that that's handled in a way that doesn't detract from either the ag preserve or our important vital valley business interests. Second, and I think this is really important, I believe that we need to restore trust in our county government. We must never, I will never, put the interests of a third-party financial party ahead of the interests of the residents of our valley. Finally, I'm a fiscal conservative, and that means that when I look at decisions that the county will make, I want to make sure that we're not wasting your money, okay? And that the decisions to use your money are being judged wisely. I believe that county decisions should be narrowly tailored to specific definable purposes that are measurable, achievable, and enforceable. Those are my top three. Other than the personal note, I've lived here in Rutherford for the past 20 years. I was born and raised in Philadelphia. I have a degree in chemistry. I have a law degree from Northwestern University. I've worked in the pharmaceutical industry for about four decades, and I'm not a career politician, but what I am is a fresh set of eyes for you in and on county government. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cio Perez.
Again, I'd like to thank League of Women Voters for the opportunity to be able to express our views and our ideas as candidates. My background is being born and raised here in St. Helena, graduating from St. Helena High School, going to Stanford first, and then transferring to UC Davis, where I've received a BS degree in viticulture and immunology. After completing my degree, I came back here to the valley and have been working in farming for the last 50 years. I've been involved with county issues for the last 35. A lot of those years were serving and representing Napa County Farm Bureau and also as a private citizen here in the county. I feel that my background is somewhat unique. When you compare it with the other candidates, they don't have a farming background to the extent that I do, nor did they have the science background that I have that I think is important in regards to considering some of the issues and the projects that are coming up before the county and have to be considered in regards to long-term effects that they will have for our communities. And I feel especially important that I feel I'm bringing back the voice of the communities to be able to express local views and hopefully have influence as designers is considering the impacts on our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will proceed with the questions, and we will rotate through. And so this time, Anne, you will be first with this question. How do you envision balanced growth in Napa County that serves local needs, agriculture, and the tourist hospitality industries' needs?
Thank you, Bernie. And you know, in my years as a planning commissioner, this is something that we are looking at in every decision, and I feel that my track record at the planning commission shows a pattern of balance, making sure that we're looking at the interests of the neighboring community and the residents, as well as the very real interest and goals of the business community and the wineries that are looking to be able to be viable. So I think it really is making sure that we understand that we're all looking to stay here long-term and have a sustainable economy. You know, we need healthy, resilient communities. We need a robust economy, and we need long-term stewardship of our natural and agricultural resources. So I think it's holding on to all of these issues at once while we're deciding these things. And I will say that I think it's also when we're working with the business community, acknowledging the sustainable measures that they're taking too, whether it's reducing vehicle miles traveled, whether it's recycled water infrastructure in projects, making sure that everyone is making the effort to find solutions that meet the needs both of residents and of our industries here.
Thank you. And same question, Anna.
Thank you, Bernie. So the way that we balance, that I've seen on St. Helena City Council, is that we have to have the process be open and transparent, and it's best when we work together early on and set the expectation from the government's perspective about what's coming, and allow there to be feedback, and then work with the developers, the business owners, to make sure that we're clear on what we need from the community and the government perspective, and that we're flexible and open for their needs as well, for what's going to make the business side work. In St. Helena, I'm coming from a community that's probably been more on the very slow or even no-growth side. We have a reputation for even being anti-business that's come up several times in our council meetings, and we've worked hard to be supportive of our local businesses. We recently did the Farmstead Development Project, and I went through that process. We negotiated in the development agreement that there was going to be a commitment with sustainability, and this was something that the developer and owner also wanted to work on. The biggest commitment that we've seen in Napa Valley for housing, over $3 million. They also were investing in purple pipe to use recycled water. That developer was responsive to every single community complaint that came through and concern in terms of noise, traffic, light, sustainability in the environment, and housing that's so critical. So it was very important that we addressed those concerns and had real actions that we were going to take so the community could trust what we were doing and see the benefits of the project for the community.
Thank you. Same question, Rafael.
Yes, thank you. So I think that we need to start by looking at the effect that these proposed developments may have on the community, the people. And in that, I think we have to look at, you know, will the projects offer any positive contributions to the community as a whole? Will it increase the jobs available? Will it do anything about our housing issues or contribute to getting more housing? You know, and if it's not, if the project is not going to contribute in a positive manner to the entire community, I think we should consider whether it is going to have negative impacts on our community as a whole, on our resources, on the people around the project, and whether, you know, we, if there are going to be negative impacts, I think we need to reconsider those projects or at least reconsider how they are proposed or use conditions and other agreements to try to change the shape of those projects. We need development. It needs to be well-thought-out because we need the economy to continue to support our valley and the entire county and those people who live here.
Thank you, Rafael. Sorry, your time is up. Sorry, we have to keep us moving here. Matthew.
I look at growth, and I consider growth through a particular lens, which includes sort of four things. One is water usage, traffic, housing availability, and perhaps the most important one for me is whether or not our initiatives on growth and the things that we're planning to do are in some way jeopardizing the preservation of our ag-preserved traditions. So that sort of becomes an overarching concern for me, but we have to deal with water availability, increased traffic, housing affordability, housing availability, and in order to do this correctly, I think the board has to become more expert at communicating with its residents. I think there has to be more outreach. The folks in the third district, it's a huge district, we need to be getting out and talking to the people in our district to find out exactly what their concerns are about growth and factoring that into a very collaborative and open discussion. But I'll conclude my remarks by reinforcing my point, which is, is growth going to impair or jeopardize the ag preserve? That's kind of one of my lead ideas, one of my lead questions.
Thank you. And now, Cio, same question for you.
Well, first off, I'm not going to repeat things that are said prior to my opportunity, but I will agree a lot with what Rafael Rios has said in regards to the effect on the resources, the communities that surround the project, and the benefit that the project may or may not have on the surrounding communities. The other thing I'll say is being familiar with the process of going through the Board of Supervisors or the Planning Commission first. The goal that's been stated by the groups, the boards, and the planning commission is that they want the best project possible. And in order to do that, I think you have to allow more time for our communities to look and see what these projects are about so they can study them better, find out what is good about it and what is bad about it, and give an opportunity to the community to express their own views and opinions for the projects that are being considered. As it is now, a report comes out from the staff maybe four or five days prior to the hearing, and that's not enough time to consume everything that are in these reports that sometimes are hundreds of pages long. So I think we need changes in our process, and I think those changes need to be made in a way and a manner to give our communities and our citizens more opportunity to make these projects better or to make sure that they're not passed.
Thank you. And now, John.
Thank you. Yeah, two core guiding principles, I think, for balanced growth are agricultural preserve and the county's general plan. And I know the general plan is a significant undertaking. We've certainly done those in the county of Yanville. We just did one a couple of years ago. Typically, they're done every year, or every 20 years, but there's no reason that the county should not be reviewing on a very regular basis the organization, as well as the policies and the procedures in that general plan. But it takes the input from residents, from stakeholders, from industry groups, county, and the elected officials throughout the jurisdictions to put together a comprehensive general plan because it is the path forward for our future. We also need to make sure that our conversations are fact-based. I know that there are some people that talk about the agricultural development or vineyard development being a significant impact on our environment when vineyard development is under 10% of our total land area in Napa County. Most growth, if it's possible, should be done in the urban areas. We should be working with our jurisdictions to have that growth when possible in the urban areas so that we don't have any kind of spread into the ag-protected lands, but it needs to be based on facts and in collaboration with all the jurisdictions and stakeholders.
Thank you, John. Thank you all. Now, we'll move on to the second question, and we will start with Anna. And the question is, what ideas do you have to make our county economy more resilient and sustainable? Anna.
Thank you. Thank you. I was just figuring out. I was unmuted that whole time. So my ideas for the economy, I know the economy, I've heard an economist speak at the Democrats' Napa Valley Club. It was clear that our wine industry really is the reason why we have such good, high-paying jobs in Napa County, and the suggestions that were presented that night were different businesses and industries off of the wine industry for bringing new jobs here. I think that there's been a lot of innovation with technology, and now we've seen during the pandemic, more people than ever moved to our up-valley community, and they're able to have really high-paying jobs because they're able to work remotely. So the way we stimulate our economy is to make sure that we have access to high-speed internet and broadband for everyone. It shouldn't just be available for those who can afford it. We need to make sure that we're investing in training programs for our youth so that they can take advantage about, when they get older, to having these high-paying jobs. It'll be incredibly important, as we think through an equity lens, that we're doing the training and the education for everybody to be able to tap into these jobs, especially considering how high the cost of living is here and the affordability crisis that we're living through in Napa County.
Thank you. And next, Rafael, same question.
Yes, thank you. So I think there are a number of things that need to be done. Yes, we are primarily wine industry, you know, county. I think that there are some high-paying jobs in that industry, but they are not all high-paying. I think really the key to maintaining a strong economy is for us to create other types of, or create the atmosphere for other types of businesses to be able to thrive, especially small businesses that are typically, you know, the core of the downtowns and the communities, small businesses that serve the local population, where you can get, you know, the day-to-day necessities and don't have to travel far to find those things at affordable prices. The wine industry certainly provides a lot of jobs, but we need to see if we can encourage other types of businesses to stay and thrive in our communities. That obviously implicates housing and transportation. We have to have the housing for the workers and transportation for those who don't have vehicles to be able to get to these jobs and to support these businesses. If we don't have the people to support the small businesses downtown, they close up. We've been seeing that problem with restaurants even. They can't find people to work in the restaurants, and they close, or they have limited hours. So it's the same issue for other types of businesses that are related to or spring from, you know, our ag and wine-based economy.
Thank you, Rafael. And next, Matthew.
So I have a perspective on the valley and its economy and its future that might be a little bit different. The problem I see is that our valley is kind of a pass-through destination for a lot of people. We have visitors that come for the wine. We have tourists. What we don't have is an attractive place for people to relocate, okay? So if you look at what happened during the pandemic, people got more comfortable working from home, you know, doing Zoom calls. What would encourage people, for example, young families living in the Lower Bay Area, like San Francisco or the Peninsula, to actually move here and consider this a place to permanently live? What concerns me about the Napa Valley is that it doesn't have a sense of place and a sense of permanence that attracts families to raise their kids here. I got to be honest with you. Our schools aren't that great, okay? And people want to live up here. They want to have really, really good schools for their kids, and if they don't, they're not going to move up here. So I think Napa Valley needs to sort of redefine itself as a place where actually people want to move and work, even if Even if they're working in sort of a more remote sense. So that's one of the things that I think could improve the economy of the valley is a more attractive place for families to to move here and raise their raise their kids. And consider that the schools are worth being here for.
Thank you. And now CEO.
Well, I think that our county and and our communities within the county over the last several years had had a real opportunity. To find out what happens to your economy when it's based only in one area. And I'm talking about the hospitality area in the wine industry. It's not that they're bad businesses, it's that when things like wildfires happen and COVID and other issues. Then our economy almost comes to a screeching halt. I think that we need to start looking at diversifying the types of businesses that we have here in the county. Separate from hospitality and separate from the wine industry. That's not to say that those industries can't continue to grow. But I think the opportunity needs to be looked at in in being able to diversify the types of businesses we have here. I think the other thing that we need to talk about as well because of our cost of living here. Is developing more of a concept of a living wage than going with minimum wage. And although our ag industry is one of the higher paying, if not the highest paying in the nation. When you take a look at costs of living here in the county, they don't come anywhere near what's needed in order to be able to live here and live here well. And we need to change that.
Thank you. And John.
Thank you. Yes, the Napa Valley is an international destination and a natural treasure. And I think we can and have and should embrace our agricultural roots. And the fact that we are one of, if not the best wine region in the world. And that's where we are seeing all the jobs that are supporting agriculture, wine, hospitality. And that has shown to be a very resilient economic base. After earthquakes, wildfires, the pandemic, the first sectors that came back as strong as ever have been those sectors. We can certainly expand our economic opportunities with workforce development. I'm good friends with Bruce Wilson, who runs the Workforce Development of the North Bay and providing. Job training, career development across all sectors, not just hospitality and wine tasting. But we need the ability to house working families. So bringing down the cost of housing locally that attracts people to the jobs. And entrepreneurs that want to come to this valley and provide new opportunities for work and for recreation.
Thank you. And Anne, same question.
Great, thank you. Yeah. So one of the places I would start is, you know, thinking about ways to. Continue to diversify our economy. I mean, I think what has been said, we are, you know, agriculture is foundational to our county. So we want to clearly hold on to that, but I think it's always good to look at what else can be out there. And the county used to have its Economic Development Commission. We don't have that active now. I'd love to see that reinvigorated so we could have discussions about diversification. In the wine industry, we have a great program in Napa Green and I'd love to see the county support that, all those programs more. To increase the number of wineries and vineyards that are participating in that because that's a voluntary program. But it has a lot of great pieces that get us further toward the goal of sustainability. I also think it's important to acknowledge the other industries that are in the county. We have a lot of healthcare workers in our county. Who are traveling distances, either leaving South County. But so looking at the industries that are here and increasing what's been mentioned before, housing and transportation options. So that people are living closer to their jobs. And then also we're finding ways to reduce those vehicle miles traveled and that will also help us. And then the final thing in terms of resilience is working on wildfire prevention. Because reducing that risk and making us more responsive in moments of wildfire, that will increase our resilience as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we will move on to the next question and we will start with Raphael. And the next question is, how long have you lived in this district and what are your top priorities for your district specifically?
Oh, I have lived in this district my entire life. I mean, I I wasn't born here, but I I came to. To the valley when I was just over two years old, immigrated from Mexico. And like I mentioned earlier, the son of a farm farm workers. And so I have been here, that's pretty much my whole life. When what I have seen really is a housing crisis. People who are in, who are farm workers and other people in low income. The low income areas are living in some places. And I'm sure the other candidates, as they've been walking the district, have seen some housing that. You you just wouldn't believe that people live in some of the places that I've seen. Housing's always been an issue and it seems to be getting worse for those at the lower economic level in our county. It's something that I would really like to to see some progress on with housing actually being built. Rather than just spoken about or being, you know, zoning properties potentially for. Affordable housing, but not really requiring that it be built. I think that's why we we have fallen so far behind. We haven't implemented any policies or restrictions that will actually get the housing built. I think that's a
Thank you.
Big issue.
Thank you. And now Matthew.
My three priorities for the residents of the third district would be, I I want to be able to demonstrate to them. That the county board can be trusted, that has integrity and is working for them and not for someone else. Secondly, I want to make sure that our ag preserve traditions are protected in a way that respects sustainability. But also neighbors are concerned about water usage in neighboring developments. We need to make sure that water decisions at the county approval level are taking clear cognizance of what the neighbors need. And that also goes for events, traffic. So folks want to preserve their quality of life in the third district. And I think it's absolutely incumbent for the board to make sure that they take reasonable steps to do that. Finally, I'd like to see a fair and stensible deal to sell the Calistoga Fairgrounds back to Calistoga. Thank you.
Thank you. CEO, you are next. Same question.
I've been a lifelong resident here in the county. Truly, the only time I spent away was during the time at Stanford and then again at UC Davis. But even then I was coming back a lot of weekends and certainly during the breaks and coming back here to the county and and working. With my family's farms. But I think that one of the more critical issues that we have in our district is, as Mr. Rio said, having to do with housing. There's, from my time and experience with the housing issue here in the county, a lot has been talked about. A lot of plans have been formed, but there's been really no action in regards to getting units built. The other thing that the county needs to do and has yet to do is we have the. Within our District Three, mobile homes that are vulnerable to being purchased by other individuals. And having their uses changed to something other than affordable housing. And if that continues, we're again losing one of our main stocks in for affordable and low income housing. That would be critical to the county and not a step in the right direction if they're lost. We need to change that.
Thank you. And John.
So how long have I lived in the district? Twenty four years, but I was first introduced to it when I was about 10 years old, which is longer than 24 years ago, I will admit. When I would visit from Oakland, my hometown, with my aunt and uncle, my uncle was the chief of surgery at the veterans home. And so I had a very early exposure to our amazing California Veterans Home in Yountville. And grew up knowing that the Napa Valley was a very special place. It changed from where our veterans have been taken great care of to even more than that. And the wonderful wine country that we enjoy. Top priorities for District Three, significantly important to bring housing that is affordable to all income levels. And underrepresented populations. We are a diverse district and a diverse county. And we need to support all of the working families, our seniors and our local workforce. So that they're not driving great distances, causing traffic and greenhouse gas emissions. And also it's the right thing to do to support our local residents. I think economic health in our agriculture and wine industries are critical in District Three. Is by far where the most vineyards and wineries are operating. So working with the cities to have a strong and vibrant local economy. That then allows us to provide resources for all of our other priorities.
Thank you. And Anne. Same question. How long have you lived in this district and what are your top priorities for this district specifically?
Great, thank you. And thanks for repeating the question. That is helpful. So how long have I lived here? So I was born at St. Helena Hospital. And so I was born in the district and I have lived here just under 40 years. Taking time away for college law school, my time at the Oregon Attorney General. And my specific priorities for District Three are, you know, wildfire prevention, water supply, water security. And workforce housing and also senior housing, because I think that is a real need that we have not talked about so much. Also, I mean, again, to kind of echo some of the other comments here, it's so important for the supervisor for District Three to take an active role. In protecting the ag preserve because vineyards and wineries are take up such a large part of this district geographically. And so to be able to make sure that the supervisor for this district is interfacing with the rest of the board on issues relating to the ag preserve. I think is really important. And then acknowledging that each community has its own priorities. You know, as Matt mentioned, Calistoga's purchase of the fairgrounds is issue number one for so many folks in Calistoga. And then Angwin, I hear concerns about broadband and also emergency egress off the hill in case of fire. So I think it's important that we acknowledge each community, a very diverse set of communities here. Is going to bring its own priorities to the fore that the District Three supervisor needs to be in communication on. Thanks.
Thank you. And Anna.
Thank you. So I've lived in St. Helena for 10 years with my family. And I grew up in Sonoma County nearby in Alexander Valley. And I've used those connections. I'm a fifth generation Californian. So what that means is my family is over in Alexander Valley, Healdsburg. I have an uncle on a houseboat that I'm close with and a cousin and his family in Marin. I have used those deep relationships we have also in San Francisco, where our family came before moving to the Russian River. I've used those relationships since being on city council in all kinds of different areas, especially with climate action. That's one of my top priorities. And you can see Sonoma County and their Board of Supervisors doing a lot with climate action. So I've been able to reach out and connect with people that are working in that area and bring those ideas to us over here in St. Helena. And on the Napa Countywide Climate Action Work that I do. Other priorities are fires for me. Of course they are, because the fires have surrounded our community and we can see how much of a threat they are for us. Water is a concern. We almost ran out of the water in St. Helena and had to impose strict penalties. That were very hard on residents and our staff, everybody involved. Those will be issues that I will work hard on. Housing is also one of them. Of course, everybody's talked about that. We've seen the negative impact by not having people who live and work here. But being able to do both those things, we want more people in our community. So we have to actually get more housing built. And then, of course, we also have to address the issues as they come up in the communities. And somehow we have to juggle all of that. And I've been able to do that and have demonstrated how I'm able to be collaborative and make that happen with my council work. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Now we'll move on to the next question. What problems and opportunities do you see in how our county budget resources are allocated? What specifically would you propose to do to include more voices in the budget process? And make the results more understandable and transparent? That's a mouthful. I will try and repeat that a few times. And we will start with Matthew.
I think the the board has a an opportunity to communicate better with the residents of the county. I'm not that impressed with the website. I think it's fairly opaque. It's pretty complicated and hard to read. I think our residents are are thirsting for a better way to to be informed about what the board is doing. On questions of budget, I've said it earlier, I I think that the residents in the county are concerned about how their money is spent. And if they're properly informed about the various plans or budget elements that involve the expenditure of their money, if they know about them and are informed. And that's requiring us to sort of get out of our offices and go and sit with them and say, what's the board doing and why? What are they planning to do? I think we can have a better dialogue that sort of incorporates the concerns from various stakeholders in the county. About what particular budget elements we should be pushing and which we should be sort of holding back on. At the end of the day, we have a limited fund of money. And my personal feeling is we need to spend it wisely. And I think our constituents are incredibly important part of that discussion.
Thank you. CEO.
That's actually quite a complicated question in regards to the county's budget being over 500 billion a year. Roughly half of it being specified to different social programs and other things that the county needs to fund. But the other half is discretionary and what we choose to do with it. I think what we should do is start having meetings on the budget during the budget discussions. Where we take it outside of the county council chambers and and move it within each of the local communities. And give them an opportunity to have discussions about the budget and how that money should be spent. There are communities that are rural, and I'll use Berryessa Estates as an example. Where they could use additional funding and help because of their situation with their water and their sewer systems. And a lot of the individuals out there are somewhat limited in regards to their finances. And pretty much fixed incomes. And the price of their water and sewer is getting to a point where it's really unaffordable. And this is an area of the of the county which considers that housing critical in regards to our lower income families. As well as underserved groups of people.
Thank you, John. I'm CEO.
But anyway, we we
I'm sorry, time is up and it's time to move on to John. The same question. What problems and opportunities do you see in how our county budget resources are allocated? And what specifically would you do or propose to do to get more voices in the budget process and make the results more understandable and transparent?
Fundamentally, communication is critical when it comes to budgets. What I've seen in the 18 years I've been on the town council in Yountville is unfortunately, the public doesn't always get engaged. Until the very end or until after budget decisions are made. We need to be very proactive as a county to bring the information to our residents, to our public. We should not assume that the public follows along our meetings, our workshops. You know, I've I've learned that every year I've been on the town council, we've balanced our budget, 18 years. It is because we are very thoughtful, we are interactive with our residents and our business community. We we are also very disciplined. We need to recognize that in some cases, investment in the future is critical. We don't see that in all of our jurisdictions. And that's why we have been able to have a very robust capital improvement plan in Yountville. We can do that at the county level, but we need communication and But we need communication and we need to make sure that we're reaching all of our population. That means bilingual communication. There are many different languages spoken in American Canyon. We need to reach our community where our community is and not assume that they are hearing everything. As much as we think we are providing information and outreach, we can always do more.
Thank you. And Anna.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and that is a complicated question. But I think there's also part of the answer to the question in the question itself. Meaning that when you ask about what are problems and potential opportunities? One of the problems I think we've heard about is that the, the process as it stands right now is not transparent. And, you know, a budget should really be the game plan for the county. It's the place where the county takes its priorities and executes on them. And so, it should be the roadmap that tells us what our policies are and, and how we're going to accomplish them. So, so things that we can do. First of all, I think there's a great tool out there, OpenGov. And the City of American Canyon has instituted that as a budget tool so that residents can go online and see choices about, choices that the city has been making about its budget. And I think having, again, to this point, are we going to get people to more workshops and things like that? That's always challenging. If we can have information that's up there long term, that's important. And also, I'd like to see in the budget process, we hear more from agency heads. So, we can hear, this is what we'd like to do, this is what we can accomplish with budget level X. If we are given budget level Y, these are the, these are the trade offs that we make. So, understanding more of that, I think, would be important. Thanks.
Thank you. And Anna.
Thank you. So, I think we can do to make, we can do the, to making the budget process more open and transparent. You can do things like we did in Santa Lena where you do a community survey. When we had extra money going through COVID, we reached out to people and asked what they would like us to spend it on. I think that's important to seek input and only if you follow that up and make it clear the actions that you're taking. That's really important for building trust. You don't just ask people to give you information, but you also actually follow up with it and show them how you've used that information. I think it's really important to be reaching out to people like everybody else said. You, making sure that we have it in the languages that people can access the information and also have trusted partners that are explaining to people how to participate and helping them through that process. We're seeing more than ever, it is difficult to show up for meetings, people are busy. Both parents are working, if you have parent kids in the house, there's just a lot going on with lives, they're really busy. So, we need to make sure that we're giving information in bite sized pieces that people can really process and in language that makes sense to them. And I think those, that's what I have right now for my ideas. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Raphael.
Yes, thank you. So, I think part of this fundamentally, you know, most people hate budgeting. They, they, they don't like the process, you know, in their, their own homes and having to do that. And it's a difficult thing, you know, to place restrictions on yourself when, when you're writing your own budget. And I think a lot of it is that people don't, certainly when it comes to big agencies, they certainly don't understand how the budgeting works and what the process is and how they can get involved. So, I think first, that there should be a lot more education, trying to educate the general public about how the process works, how it's developed, how it's connected to our general plan goals and policies. And providing access to the budget as others have said in, in different forms and different ways, at different media, through social media, through the website. And definitely in, in multiple languages as we have now. Of course, Spanish speaking community is, is very large, but there are definitely other languages that spoken, especially in the, the South County. So, I think having that access and really kind of drawing a roadmap so that people can see how the different departments in the county, where their money comes from, how it's spent and how changes can be made and really what is available for those discretionary projects. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, this time we will start with CEO. And the question is, are you concerned about the influence of money and politics? If so, do you have some solutions? And have you placed any voluntary restrictions on yourself in terms of your campaign fundraising?
Well, my short answer is yes, I get the concern about the amounts that people can donate to campaigns. And I think the Board of Supervisors last year took a step in the direction of putting limitations on, which I, I again feel that that was a good step, but that should not have only, that should not have been the only step. I think we need to take a look at both sides. One of donations coming in. And I think there should be a limit on expenditures so that you're only allowed to spend so much money on a campaign. That would level the playing field for somebody who's an incumbent. And for those that are just becoming active politically and want to run for office. I think the limitation also would make an individual have to be stronger in regards to being in touch with the local community or their constituents that you're trying to convince to give them their votes. So, again, I think there's an important part that the supervisors have taken as of late. I think the, there should be a, a smaller amount of donation as a limit to the top. I think even a thousand dollars would be great. And again, maybe the spending side to be a total of seventy-five thousand and no more.
Thank you. John.
Well, I think you see this as a topic of conversation at the national level and even now down to the local level. But I, I believe that we need to be electing our officials for the right reasons and with a level of trust that regardless of campaign contributions, we are going to be making decisions based on what's best for our communities. This is, there is a new limit of forty-nine hundred dollars per source that has been put in place for starting this election cycle. So, that's a new limit that did not currently previously exist. But I think a, a fundamental part of this is transparency about all of our donations. We all are required to report everything that we receive. And so, it is available for the public to scrutinize, to evaluate and decide, are the people that are supporting this candidate doing so with a level of honesty and integrity? Or are they trying to influence decision making? It's about the people that we are electing. And if, you know, I have a long history, a record of service. And I open any of my campaign contributions to the entire public for review. I think that's the important thing is honesty and integrity with what we are doing, how we are representing our decision making based on our community, not based on contributions.
Thank you. Anna.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I would agree with much of what some of the previous speakers have said. As, you know, the county has taken that first step in setting that forty-nine hundred dollar per source limit. And I like an idea that was posed earlier in another forum about setting a lower limit to that. And I think that would be a great thing for the board to take up. And beyond that, I am proud of the number of donations that I have from within Napa County and District Three in particular, and the breadth of those donations. And I think figuring out ways that we can help reduce the spending level, I think, would be good for campaigning in general. And so, yeah, I'd be interested in seeing where the board could take steps to reduce the, the funding that's required in these races.
Thank you. Anna.
Thank you. Yes, I am concerned and I am also open to more limits. I'm concerned because I never would have thought, you know, even a few years ago, that I could have ever been in this position and raising the money that you need to raise to be on this panel tonight. It is jaw, my jaw drops open, it is just incredible the kind of money you need. And that's a limiting factor to so many people in our community. I went through emerged leadership training, political training, so that I did have the skills to be able to ask people for money, that's not an easy thing to do. I've had friends that rent an apartment and can't afford a carpet, yet they donated five hundred dollars to me because they believe in me and my campaign. And now, they've taught me how to give to other women running for office and wanting to get in these positions for the right reason. I think money should not be a limiting factor, yet sadly, it is in so many cases. And so, we do need to do more. It's also a challenging subject because we can't set limits for people who want to self-fund their campaign. So, that could be another way that people are able to get into elected office when they're very wealthy and able to do that and block out other people who need to be able to raise money. So, it's a complicated issue and we need to consider it carefully. But yes, I'm very concerned about money limiting people, good people, from running for office.
Thank you. Raphael.
Yes, thank you. So, I, I think this is also, everybody said it's kind of a difficult issue. I, I'm certainly not against the contribution limits, but I, I think further limitation should be done, if it is done, with other limitations on expenditures as, as CEO had said, and I think Anna just mentioned, you know, personal financing, personally financing your campaign, which is another issue. I think if, if those other things are not limited, it's going to prevent a lot of people who do not have the economic means to fund their own campaign from considering running for office. And there are, this is not the only public office, there are a lot of public offices and different agencies, school districts and everything that we need good people to serve. And if we, we just limit the contributions, we're, we're going to shut a lot of those people out from even considering, you know, serving the community. So, I think we have to consider the expenditure limit and somehow limiting how people can personally finance their campaign if, if they have those means.
Thank you. Matthew.
I, I have used the combination of individual contributions and I have self-financed to a certain extent. I actually believe that the ability to fund your own campaign ought to be okay because it, it eliminates any question that you've been bought by anybody, okay? There's an interesting issue with, with campaign contributions, which I call sort of the delayed, you know, proof in the pudding. We can read all the disclosures that are going to come out at the end of April, who contributed to whom. That doesn't really tell you anything about the individual integrity of any of the candidates. And I have no reason to doubt the integrity of any of my colleagues here. It will be, the proof is in the pudding. How do our supervisors act and decide in a way that communicates to the broader community that they may in fact be operating under the influence of large donations from particular donors? We'll never know. The fact that people get money from, from a particular donor does not in itself indicate that anything is wrong or that they're, they're doing something improper. I agree with the forty-nine hundred dollar limit, I agree with the limits that the county currently has on loans. I don't really see a need for further limitations. I do think the public needs to be looking at the nexus between what a supervisor does and the money that they've received and from whom.
Thank you. And now, we will go on to the next question. How do you see the Board of Supervisors working on regional issues like transportation, drought, wildfires, water resources and sea level rise? And we will start this time with John.
I couldn't even write down all the parts of the question yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Could you go ahead and repeat that?
Yes, region, it's mainly how the Board of Supervisors from our county, you see them working with, on regional issues because a lot of these issues obviously go beyond the county. Transportation, drought, wildfires, water resources and sea level rise.
Okay, nice, simple question for us. So, I, I, in the time that, that I have, I'll, I'll explain. One of the, the best sources of my experience and my network is through the League of California Cities. I have been involved in that organization that is an advocacy over organization for all four hundred and eighty-two California cities. I've been involved for over fifteen years and I was the president of that statewide organization in two thousand nineteen and twenty. What I was doing and have done for many years is be involved in advocacy for local government. In particular, Yountville, Napa County, the North Bay Region and California in general. And so, we have a significant Bay Area influence in Sacramento. We have Supervisor Pedrosa, who has been a chair of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So, we have folks that have kind of, you know, boxed above our weight in terms of influence in the region and across the state. So, that having the network of colleagues and the experience of being in the legislative strategy conversations across all of the topics you talked about, whether it's wildfire protection, drought, climate initiatives. We need someone that has been there and had those conversations at the regional, state and even the national level, and I've done all those.
Thank you. Anna.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a great question and of course, it touches so many areas. And as, you know, we've all heard, you know, wildfire, drought, do not, do not acknowledge county lines. I would say that my work on the Watershed Information and Conservation Council has been so helpful in understanding the different linkages that are possible and need to happen. I love that John mentioned MTC and that is a key one for transportation and be, making sure that Napa supervisors continue to stay involved and that will be so important. But also, other kinds of things, we're involved in the Bay Area Regional Collaborative, which is a place where things like the, whatever happens with the new routing on Highway thirty-seven, that can be debated. And I think also because watershed issues don't stay within a single county, that framework is a really useful one going forward. So, again, I think having board members and each board member is going to bring their own set of expertise, but make sure that we're operating on a regional level with our colleagues in other areas. You know, Sonoma County just is looking at what it can do to move its groundwater sustainability plan forward. And I think Napa County should be tracking that too. So, it's, it's making sure that we can learn from other jurisdictions in the region too and, and move ourselves forward following some of their examples.
Thank you. Anna.
Thank you. So, there's the formal way and then there's the informal way and they're connected as well. Formally, there's all these different committees, like I'm sitting on the Napa County Climate Action Committee and that has elected officials from each of the cities plus our Board of Supervisors. So, we're able to receive information and have ideas that come through the community come to us there. And also, we develop relationships and we're able to work together. The informal part are the relationships and connections because of our common interest sitting on that committee that happen organically outside of that. Because of the Brown Act, it could only be with like one other person, but I've had so much fulfillment and joy really from being, serving when we get to work on projects together and help each other. Like when the city of Napa comes to me and says, can the city of Santa Lena work on this? We want to do it together. And then, it's even more powerful when we can both bring it forward and work on it together. So, I see that working really well and I want to see more of that, like for housing. I would like to see a regional approach. Also, with the vehicle miles traveled, we obviously, traffic is a big issue and it's also greenhouse gas issue that we need to figure out a way. It's happening through the Napa Valley Transit Authority, I would like to see even more action on that and all with climate action. There's a way to connect that in. So, I think that there's more that we can do with that where we're working together. And it is really, really important to have good relationships with people in each of our cities and towns throughout the county so that we can work together and solve these issues together. They're incredibly challenging, it's the only way that I see us being able to truly address them and make a difference.
Thank you. Raphael.
Thank you. So, I, I think it's incredibly important that the supervisors participate in regional agencies and groups. Because, I mean, obviously, it's clear that these issues like transportation, housing, water, all of these things cross borders, they're, they're not confined to our county. We, everything influences what's happening here. The increase in traffic and pollution and everything in the Bay Area reaches all of us. So, our supervisors need to be involved in those discussions. That's where they can find out what other communities are doing, how they're going about addressing this, these That's where they can uh find out uh what other communities are doing, how they're going about addressing this, these issues. Uh, in, and those other communities. And finding opportunities to collaborate with those other. Agencies or members of those agencies. On issues that uh affect us, for example, uh. You know, there's a lot of traffic that goes through Napa to Lake County or from Lake County through Napa to Vallejo to Santa Rosa. And uh, you know, transportation planning uh needs to, to take uh. Take all of that into account and have all of those jurisdictions working on those issues together. Uh, we can't, just like we can't solve our individual issues in our. Uh, communities here in the county, we can't solve the counties, all of the counties' issues. Just keeping isolated to ourselves. We, we need to participate in those others.
Thank you. Matthew.
I think one of the examples of regional. Cooperation that turns out to be problematic for. Napa County is, is the allocation of the state housing mandate. I'd like to see a better handling of that and uh, I, I don't know what deals we can cut with our neighboring counties. But the fact is, we have um, a very unique situation in Napa where finding a place for the state housing. Allocation, which is sort of initially comes down from the state, then it's determined by the regional governments. And then we're stuck trying to figure out where to put, you know, three thousand or more. Uh, housing in, in the Napa County. I think that's an area where we should be more persuasive. In, in sort of defending our turf, if you will, in a, in a collaborative way. Secondly, and this is a very specific issue. In terms of a regional, federal, state. You know, issue. I'd like to see if we can unlock some Bariessa water. You know, I gather that we can't, okay? But I'm not convinced. I think that there ought to be some effort locally. At the state level, at the federal level, to provide more access to Bariessa water. For Napa in drought emergencies. Um, this seems like a historical glitch that ought to be fixable. So that's an area where I think that we can put our heads together and figure out how to solve that.
Thank you. And CEO.
I think it's one of the more important things that uh. Uh, a supervisor from Napa can do is participate on regional committees. In order to do a couple of things. One is to cooperate with other um jurisdictions where we can cooperate. If it's of benefit to our residents of the county. Uh, but I think it's also important to be at those meetings when we have to defend. What we have to preserve and save here in our own county. And the housing issue is, is, and is a great example. Uh, the housing numbers are determined regionally. Uh, Napa gets their quota that they have to account for. Uh, but we've been able to have an exception in that. The county has an opportunity to uh, uh, work uh in hand in hand. With our urban areas in order to take some of those numbers off the county's hands. Now, if we didn't have the ability to do that. Uh, our county, our, our rural areas would look a whole lot more like San Jose and other built up areas than what we have today. But we still need to be able to have individuals representing our county at those regional uh, uh discussions. So that we are not over encumbered. When we're choosing a different direction than say Santa Clara or San Jose or San Francisco or any of the other counties.
Thank you. Thank you. We have time for one more question here and we will start with Dan. The question is. How would you engage with different segments of the community? Nonprofit, business, et cetera. And how will you, with people working so hard during the day? Make the public processes, Board of Supervisor meetings more accessible to underrepresented and diverse communities?
Thank you. Yeah, that's a great question and that's an ongoing question. I know we've. Um, experienced the challenge at a planning commission meeting of how to make sure that people who are interested in an issue or, or a project. Can get there. So I think it's, um, you know, as, as we talked about in the question. Uh, in the budget question, it's the same idea of um, making uh government. Processes available in many different ways, you know, making sure that we've got websites that are accessible and people can give their feedback there. Um, a- as well as scheduling meetings at different times of day so that we're not always meeting. You know, at nine AM on a weekday when people can't attend. So, so building flexibility into those routines. But I think the first part of your question went to um, uh, reaching out to different segments of the community. And again, I think as we've talked about District Three. Oh, has so much diversity in terms of the types of communities it has, you know. Um, very rural areas, very remote areas, um, as well as our towns and cities, which are so important. Um, so I think, um, I would say I've been doing the same thing that I've been doing as part of the campaign is just making sure to get out there and. And uh, ask to meet with businesses, ask to meet with nonprofits. And, and build those relationships and foster them with uh repeated check-ins and conversations about the issues that are. Important to them, um, and, and what's coming down the pike. But I think that again, that's part of good communication is being in touch. Um, over a long period of time. Um, thanks.
Thank you. And Anna.
Thank you. I'm glad for this question because I left it out of my response before. With the regional approach, it's important not just to have good relationships with other. City officials throughout Napa County, but also the nonprofit community and the community partners. So what I will do that I have been doing and will continue to do is be an active participant in organizations like COAD. Community organizations, active in disasters or the CLC, which are the community leadership. I believe it's Coalition. I can't remember what that last C is. But there are groups already formed where people are coming together from government, from nonprofit. From emergency areas, everybody that's working together when disasters hit. Or will know about community services that are important for our community. As one example is during the fires. There was a need to get books from our libraries to kids who were showing up and didn't have something to do at the evacuation centers. I want to know about that because I sit on the library board. And then as a county supervisor, will be in charge of the Department of Education, it's really important to stay connected to the kids and the families that we're helping. There's also the Up Valley Senior Co- um, Co- Collaborative. That'll be really important to know about the senior needs. I also think that there's way we reach people through social media during the fires. I saw a lot of Facebook. Interactions and when Board of Supervisors can speak in Spanish and staff can speak in Spanish and you offer them in both. I think that really goes a long way to reaching more people about important issues that are going on and we can do more of that. Oh, one other thing. Oh, I'm out of time.
I'm sorry. Rafael.
Yes, so District Three is, is very large, uh, and the population is scattered around at different areas. So one of the things is that, that the supervisors gotta do outreach, get out into the community. Get out into the different, uh, the different areas of the district. Um, not just uh, sit at, you know, the county center. But needs to go out to the, the cities, spend time uh with the uh councils there, uh, community groups. Um. Do, do a lot of outreach. It's a little bit more difficult than, you know, the supervisor real districts that. That are uh in Napa and encompass pretty much in the city of Napa. Um, so that's one thing. Um. You know, being involved, not just in those high ticket uh events that supervisors get invited to and attend all the time, but. Getting out to just the community centers and inviting people to meet them there. Um, meetings, uh, I think we need to rethink some of the times we hold our meetings. Uh, many public agencies uh have this issue that uh, it's already been mentioned about. You know, people can't get to, to meetings at nine o'clock in the morning or uh, you know, two o'clock when. Most people are working and don't have a, the flexibility to, to attend any of these meetings and participate. So maybe rethinking the time that we hold our public meetings.
Thank you. CEO.
I think it's important that. As a supervisor in District Three, we make ourselves accessible and available to all of communities, uh, uh, from Yountville. Uh, to Calistoga, to uh various estates and the Pope Valley uh area. Uh, in order to make sure that we understand the views of the different areas, what they're concerned about. In regards to the different projects that are being considered, as well as the long-term help and uh. Uh, hopes that these areas have uh for their futures. Uh, and I plan on doing that by uh establishing an office uh with set hours and days. Uh, where I'll be there, uh, where people can come in. Uh, make myself available uh to set up appointments on whatever day and time. Would be the best for the schedules of those that have concerns to be able to speak with them. I plan on attending as many events as I can, uh, which are local uh to the different communities. Uh, such as the farmers markets and, and other uh activities that happen. Uh, if not daily or weekly, monthly, uh, and make my presence known that. Uh, uh, and that, uh, and let people know that I'm approachable. Uh, that I may not agree with their position, uh, but they can certainly give me their own views, uh, have a discussion. And uh possibly change my own position if I'm convinced that they have good points.
Thank you. And John, now to you.
Yeah, the best way to uh really appreciate engaging with different segments of our community is having served. In local. City or town government. We live it every single day. It's walking the dog, it's playing bocce, it's uh going to a local restaurant. Uh, and we are engaged and I think that's been a, a challenge when. People don't even know who their county supervisors are. Or don't know uh the last time they saw their county supervisor. That's not okay. Uh, and to really appreciate that is to have lived it. In real time, uh, which I've done certainly as a mayor for twelve years, but even before that as a, a town council member. Uh, I've also been able to share best practices. Through my role with the League of California Cities, which has made me a better local leader. By learning from others that have different dynamics in their cities. About how do you engage when you have multilingual situations, when you have different economic. Uh, levels that you are trying to reach out in, in support, uh, when you're in rural or urban settings. So all of that experience comes together to really appreciate the importance of communication and being accessible. I don't even have an office in the town hall in Yountville. Uh, I don't want an office in town hall. I want to be out on the street. I want to be engaged in uh social activities where we are truly. Uh, supporting our residents and communicating as people, not just as elected officials.
Thank you. And now, thank you all for answering all those questions. We will go to final closing statements. We will only have one minute for each of you. I know that might not be very much. Um, and we were going to go in the reverse order where we started, so that means CEO that you will go first.
Well, again, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum tonight. Uh, I also appreciate those uh that are listening and attending and I hope there's a lot more. That later uh take advantage of uh the recording and watch that as well. I think I have a unique background amongst those of us that are running for District Three, uh, if a supervisor. Uh, in fact that uh I've been uh farming, uh, I have a science-based background. And I have a real concern uh in making sure that the comments, concerns and uh. Uh, approach of the communities are brought back into the discussions at the Board of Supervisors. I think I would be very good at that. Uh, I think the, again, because of my history in the county issues. Uh, that also would help me in regards to uh being. Up to speed very soon, if not immediately when I take that seat. So I appreciate uh our citizens and their consideration for their vote.
Thank you. And now Matthew.
Thanks for the opportunity to meet you folks tonight by Zoom. Um, when I gave my opening um. Talk, I talked about three priorities that I have. Balancing ag preserve and business. And doing that in a way that I will confess, I have a pretty watchful eye on the ag preserve in that equation. But we need to be fair and respectful of business and agriculture. The second thing was uh in the importance of restoring trust in county government. The third thing I mentioned was the fact that I think a fiscally conservative approach to budgeting. And county expenditures is particularly important. But there's one of those three that I think is especially important. And that is restoring your trust in the integrity and competence of county government. I don't think county government should suddenly kind of become a, a crony club, like a club for the elite. Where, you know, it's like a piggy bank for the, for the privileged few. The county. Leadership should be working for you, not.
Thank you, Matthew. Sorry. I know that one minute seems short for everyone, but that's all we have left. Rafael.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening with the rest of the candidates and uh being able to, to share my views and. Reasons why I'm, I'm running. Uh, I want to say that I am the uh, the right candidate for this position, given my personal background. My educational background. And my, my business education and my legal education. I'm not running because I want to be a politician. I'm running because I want to help the, the people of the county. I've seen the changes that have happened over my lifetime here in the county. And the difficulty uh that people have, not just finding places to live, but. But those of us that had been here for such a long time can see that. Our kids are going to have an extremely difficult time staying here or coming back here. And I'm hoping that uh we can change that. We can change that trajectory where uh everyone who has been here for such a long time gets displaced. And only those wealthy can move into the county.
Thank you. And Anna.
Thank you. Thank you so much for tonight and the opportunity to be here. So what I didn't get to mention before is that I bring a background and education through going through Pepperdine University. I have a Master of Science in Organization Development. And then I had work experience after that, helping different companies and nonprofits work on collaboration. Leadership, team effectiveness, and how do you work through really difficult conflicts and bring people together to solve problems? And I have seen that those skills are needed in local government and I would be so grateful for this opportunity to use them as your next county supervisor. I also wanted to talk about another issue that's important to me, which is mental health. I've lost three family members to suicide. My heart almost stopped when I just read in the newspaper. That suicide is now the second cause of death for ten-year-olds to fourteen-year-olds. That is just not acceptable to me. I know that there is more with all of the millions of dollars that we spend in our county that we can do. For all people with mental health and especially with our youth. I believe that our schools are fantastic in Upper Valley and I believe that there are good people out there working on this issue and we can make it even better.
Thank you. And.
Thank you. You know, my parents moved to Napa County in nineteen sixty-nine. My dad was a winemaker and my mom worked in a tasting room for thirty years. The wine industry put food on our table and I understand what a vital role it plays in this community. My family and I are not in the wine industry now, so I have the unique position to know this shared history. And to take an independent, balanced views, a view of the issues we face. I've received hundreds of endorsements from local residents in all parts of District Three. And I'm particularly proud to be endorsed by Supervisor Diane Dillon and Mayor Scott Sedgley. I take these endorsements as a strong message about my leadership capabilities. I look forward to working together to address the challenges that face our county and put us on a path to sustainability, inclusivity and resilience. Thank you.
Thank you. John.
Yeah, thank you all for participating tonight and, and uh, thank you to my uh fellow candidates. Uh, my experience, as I've mentioned, extends beyond Yountville and even Napa County and it's made me a more effective local leader. Uh, for example, during the pandemic in our twenty twenty wildfires, I was part of local, state. Uh, regional and federal strategic planning and uh had access to information that I then. Shared with my colleagues throughout the county and uh business leaders and the public. That was helping save lives and livelihoods. Uh, I've been directly involved in advocacy throughout the state regarding housing development, homelessness. Public and mental health services, wildfire protection, gun safety, transportation, water, climate action, all the things that are most critical for us in Napa County. And I'm not just saying what I think I will do or what I hope I can do. I'm talking about the things that I have done and will continue to do. Experience matters and I believe that experience that has a record of results matters even more. Uh, thank you for the time tonight and I look forward to your support.
Thank you. And all candidates. And all candidates, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Napa County, I thank you for your time to participate in this forum. I know you're all very busy, and also your willingness to serve our community by even running for this office. We would also like to remind you that League of Women Voters has a website called Voters Edge, which you probably received an invite to add your information to. We encourage people to please add it there because it's another source of information for our voters. And now I will turn the forum back to Yolanda. Thank you.
We especially thank the audience for joining the session to meet the candidates for proposing and for proposing your thoughtful questions. For further information about our upcoming Board of Supervisor forum, District One, and about all the candidates' embelliment measures, links to our Waters Edge Guide that Bernie just mentioned, and other election information, please visit the least easy-to-use website, l w v napa.org. If you'd like to be involved with the LWV men and women, helping make democracy work for everyone, it's easy to join us. Just visit our website. A reminder that the deadline to register vote and still get a ballot in the mail is May 23rd. You can register and vote conditionally in person up until 8:00 PM on June 7th at a vote center or the election office. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to re-register. If you vote by mail in Napa County, you can avoid any postal delivery delays by using one of the many drop boxes in Napa, and you do not need postage. All drop boxes and some vote centers will be available on May 9th. The Election Department would like us to announce that we need more vote center workers. The pay is good for a few weeks of work. For details, see the County of Napa Elections webpage. Finally, please encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote in this election. Every vote counts. Thank you and good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night, thank you.
Thanks, good night.